I want to stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, can I get an agenda approval? Is there any changes or additions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to add item 6D. I think you have a copy of it, cross-country ski grant and aid approval that came in late last week. And then we'd like to pull item 9A related to the OSHA ETS since the, since the state was put back in place.
Alrighty.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Thank you. I'll second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Any public input this morning? Doesn't look like it. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheriff. All those in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to county employee recognition. We have in the county attorney's office, John Olson began full-time position of Assistant County Attorney on January 5th of this year. And the county sheriff, we have Joshua Barthman began the full-time position of dispatcher jailer on January 11th of this year. Andrew Stammer began the full-time position of dispatcher jailer on January 16th of this year. Steven Soderberg is recognized for his service from June 8th of 2021 to January 23rd of 2022. And social services, Toni J. Carstrom is recognized for her 17-plus years of service from October 4th of 2004 to January 18th of 2022. Thank you all. Number five, highway and survey. Good morning.
Good morning. First on our agenda, we've got review and approve final payment. This is for project SAP 029-600-016. It's Fairway Drive. This was a State Park Road account job that we did for Henry at a township. Everything is in order, so I would ask for a final payment to Anderson Brothers Construction out of Brainerd in the amount of $5,397.45.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Tom.
I will second.
Thank you, Sheriff. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
And the second is to review and approve the resolution for our prioritized bridge replacement list. Each year, we come to you with this list. It shows basically the bridges that we have in the works for the next five years. One change that you'll notice from last year is that the ratings that they use now have changed from the sufficiency rating to what's called an LPI. It's a local planning index, and so as soon as that hits 60 or below, then it's eligible for funding. So you can see that the three bridges we have here are 57, 57, and 48. And these three bridges are shown in our five-year plan, and so this is a formality to give the state an idea of what we have planned for the next five years.
Jed, how many bridges do we have in Hubbard County?
Roughly 60, with the amount that we inspect with the townships.
Okay, and we don't have any in Arago Township, so how do, how do you know it says township or state bridge funds? So does the township, do the townships receive funding also, or do they have to levy for that?
So there's a town bridge fund, and there's also special town bridge funding through the state. Typically, the only thing that the townships are on the hook for is $10,000 towards the engineering of the project and $10,000 towards the approach rating. So everything else would be covered hopefully under some type of town bridge or a bridge bonding type fund.
Thank you.
We had that, Schoolcraft Township used that years ago. We had a bridge going over the Schoolcraft River. 100 residents in our township, and how are we ever going to afford to replace that bridge? So the, the bridge fund really helped us out.
I will move to approve.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dan. Any other discussion? All those of...
You know what? I just have one more question for Jed. And so Jed, the one that you submitted to MRC?
The project, yep.
Yeah, so that's, that's kind of like a wish bridge at this point because it's so expensive?
That was actually like a grading project. No bridge included on that, so that was...
Well, there wasn't any bridge. That was strictly road. Okay.
Just road.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried?
Very good. And then just a bit of information, Jeff and I will be at our annual conference the rest of this week over at Craigins, so...
We'll have fun.
Yeah, still accessible by phone, so if anybody needs to get ahold of us.
I got one question.
Sure.
In the financials, did I read it right that the sales tax option was 1.8 million?
That is correct.
In 2021?
Yep.
Wow.
That's our biggest collection, yeah.
And you had budgeted 800,000?
We did, yeah. We didn't know what was going to happen with the, with the COVID-related issues and whether that would go down. The nice thing about that is, you know, for our budget, you know, you have an expenditure but a revenue too, and so it doesn't, that stays in that account for those specific projects that you guys approved through our five-year plan, so that's a bonus for us for planning reasons, but we've got lots of spots for it.
Yeah, okay, good.
So at MRC, we had considerable discussion. Aiken County brought it forth that, you know, for counties like us, what a win-win. For counties like them, they're not seeing any increase. The legislature has kind of forgotten to increase where the normal funding has come through, and so that's something that they're going to try to develop as a priority for the legislature to look at that.
Alright, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Natural Resource Management.
Good morning.
Morning.
First item on the agenda is a resolution as part of our Deep Lake Park project. This is a resolution to act as the lead applicant for the regional designation to the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission. Our application has already been turned in, so they're already taking, starting to take a look at that. But the county board also has to provide a support, supporting resolution, so that's, this part of it, we will, if you approve this, we will submit this as well as part of the application.
How, how did, who's, who named it Deep Lake Park?
Um, kind of a question, we talked about Val Chatel versus Deep Lake Park. Deep Lake is the lake that this is surrounding.
Yep.
We talked about Val Chatel. My thought was is that since we are going to be drawing outside of our, our local region, and, you know, upon the, you know, development of this park, basically all of the remnants from Val Chatel will be gone, and a lot of the people will not, you know, know...
If you're not local.
Yeah, they won't know much about the Val Chatel history. We're going to try and incorporate as much as we can into, into the, you know, the redevelopment of the park, but I thought it was probably more appropriate to call it Deep Lake Park. I did send out an email to, you know, some of the people that we've been working with, Jeff and Stuart, Bob McGillbury, really what we needed to name there, what we wanted to name this. Since the name of the park was in the application, we wanted to kind of have a name on it before we sent that application in, so I suppose we still could change it if we want, but that's what I came up with.
I wasn't asking you to change it, I was just curious.
Okay.
The committee. The committee had feedback and settled on that very quickly.
Okay, okay. And then this has nothing to do with the application, but when you're talking about Val Chatel as we develop this. So in Arago Township along Highway 71, there's, there's a turnoff and there's a large sign giving history. That would be nice for something to do here.
And we'll probably try and find, you know, some of the old photos and stuff.
Yeah.
And maybe down in the, in the day-use area or something, put up a, a big plaque, kind of memorialize some of that.
Yep, because there's a lot of history there.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, Mark, you know, there's some graves at the roadway. What are you going to do with them?
The family has asked that if we acquire this property, that they be allowed to exhume those bodies and reinter them someplace else. And certainly would have no problem with that. We know where they are. They're marked graves, so we know where they are, so just a matter of allowing them to go in there and do that.
Would we pay for that, or are they...
I think the family would, would do that, yeah.
Alright.
And if that option didn't work, would we fence off the area? I mean, I don't think we can disturb grave, grave cemeteries?
Um, yeah, we probably would, would put up some kind of a fence around it to keep people out. I mean, it's, it's not in an area that we plan on having any development in, but there would still be people fairly close to, in and around that area, so.
Thank you. Okay, and let's see. I guess the only thing, I want to make a comment is I'm, I'm not opposed to all this. I'm just kind of thinking it's, we have to go through this process, but it seems like we're getting the cart in front of the horse, but we haven't had public input and stuff like that on this whole, whole Deep Lake Park concept type of thing. And I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
The, we're actually exactly at the right point in this process, and after the preliminary designation is determined, then we begin the full master planning process, which includes all the public comment.
Okay.
So this, we're, we're following the Greater Minnesota Parks and Trails playbook, and the public comment comes during the development of the master plan. The preliminary review and designation is, people have continued to ask questions about specifics that we just can't have because we haven't had the public comment and we haven't done the master planning process, but we have to get this far and get the, get the designation from the state of Minnesota relative to this application before we can move forward with it. So we're, that's, that's exactly right, and that's just kind of a cumbersome aspect of this planning process because you have to go this far before you ask anybody about it.
Yeah, it just, like I say, it seems a little backwards, but it's the way we have to go.
Other than throwing the doors wide open and saying, everybody, let's, let's have everybody, we'll do this all by referendum, which then nothing happens. We, we have to get to the point of identifying the basic elements of this, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Sheriff. Second? I'll second. Thank you, Tom. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried? 6B.
Second item on the agenda is a request to transfer a lease, lease number 18, from Clayton Swanson to his daughter, Amy Asaf. Clayton Swanson no longer lives in the area. He lives out in Montana, and his son, who was also on the, on the, the lease, lives in Idaho, and his dad, who is the third person on the lease, is 99 years old, so does not get out there much anymore. So they're asking to transfer the lease to the daughter and son-in-law, and our latest inspection on that cabin found no problems. This is probably one of our better cabins that we've, that we've got on our lease program, so we certainly recommend allowing the transfer of the lease.
Any discussion or questions? Take a motion then.
I'll move to approve.
And I'll second it. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried? Yeah. 6C.
Next item on the agenda is a review of our January 10th timber auction. We had 12 tracts on the, on the auction. I think there was about 12,000 cords of, of wood. All the parcels sold on the first round of bidding. Praise prices, or the bid prices were fairly steady. Aspen was down just slightly from our October auction, but the October auction was up from overall, so our prices are holding steady, steady. If you take a look at the, the graph that I provided, the dark, the dark blue line is our three-month moving period average. So you can see that the trending line is, is slightly on the upward motion. The heavier blue line is our actual Aspen price. You see that there's a little decline in that, but overall, I think we've hit that bottom and we're having a very slow climb, which is good. We don't want any peaks and valleys, jumps, highs and lows, so I think we're, we're moving things in the right direction. Total amount of the sale for this auction was $403,734.10. That is $724.97 per acre. And we had approximately 21.7 cords per acre on this auction, so volumes are, per acre are up, and the dollars per acre are, are fairly decent too, so overall, pretty good auction.
And the dollar total is higher than you were expecting?
Um, yeah. We had, we had a pretty good size auction. I mean, at 12,000 cords, it was a pretty good size auction, so, but at $400,000, if we can keep that up by the end of the year, we'll have a pretty good total. We got three more auctions to go, so. It'll work out good.
Yeah. 6D, cross-country.
Yeah, this came in late Thursday. This is an agreement with the IT Tasked to our Outdoor Activities Club. Just our annual agreement on the maintenance of the cross-country ski trails north of town, Soaring Eagles Ski Trails. I do need a signature from the chairman and myself on this, and so I asked that we approve the agreement.
I, I will move to approve. This is highly used and it's kept up very well.
Very much so. Yes, that's a second. Yes, it is. Sorry. I was multitasking.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you very much. Next, we're looking at solid waste. Morning, Josh.
Morning.
Morning.
Alright, so I have two items on the agenda this morning. The first one is to review and approve quote for a camera system. Kind of the background information, we had this project budgeted for 2021. It was delayed due to seeing if we could tie it into any grant funding. We still have the funds available. On this project, we'll provide security cameras and monitoring for our south transfer station. Our north transfer station, we did implement cameras there a few years ago already, so. We received two quotes, one from Pro Custom and Security LLC out of Detroit Lakes and Allstate Communications out of Sauk Rapids. And we'll be recommending a low quote for $40,428.15 from Pro Custom and Security out of Detroit Lakes. There are, is one thing we are looking at with IT. And if you remember, Jed was looking at this same vendor, so there's a, one thing we want to double-check before we move forward, but would like approval pending review with IT, so.
Is this comparing apples to apples? The quotes are so far off. Were they looking at the exact same thing?
Well, they each put their own proposal in, and the one thing we're looking at...
Were they, were they using the same system, or did they come up with two different systems?
It's, you know, I don't know. It's all different quality cameras and stuff like that. The one thing we're checking with IT is there's a a federal requirement for federal regulations that the cameras have to be up to a certain spec.
Okay.
So that's what we're double-checking to see, and if, if that comes to light where we need to change something, then both me and Jed would probably come back and have adjusted quotes, so.
Yeah, I noticed that too, and I recall the highway department was similar where they had two quotes quite a spread between them, but... Any further discussion?
So you're going to have the, is the quote the one that has this high identity, identify? You know, you got these examples of images. Just one where you're going to be able to identify who's ever there?
Um, I don't know the, I don't think, for most of them, it's not going to be that high. If you see the sketch we have, with all the cameras we have, we, I mean, between the cameras, we'll be able to pick out, you know, license plates and stuff like that, so, if we need to, so.
Yeah, I used to have cameras that were grain, you could hardly tell who's there, so I upgraded. Now we can zoom right in on them, which is nice.
We had had conversations about tying all of our camera and security systems together and the stuff that's not part of the campus. It just, it doesn't make sense to do that, which is why they're, they're bringing forward their own, their own bids.
Makes sense.
Alrighty. Anybody like to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Dan. In a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any more discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried?
Alright, the next item I have is to review and approve quote for above-ground fuel tank. That's at our south transfer station. This is a budgeted item for 2022, and it'll be replacing two manual flow tanks that we have at our, our transfer station. Received quotes from two different companies on this project, and I'd recommend quote number one from LA Rossmann Distributing out of Park Rapids for $4,333, and that's for a 500-gallon double-wall tank and includes all required equipment set up and delivery.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to approve the number one quote.
Thank you, Sheriff. And I'll second the motion. Any further discussion? I did notice that the bid number three is only a 300-gallon tank, so...
Yeah, and we, we typically have delivered about 300 gallons every other week, so we thought we, a little bit more capacity probably would make sense, so. And that's again just for equipment. We, you know, the onsite equipment at the transfer station, so.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried? That's all I had, unless anyone had anything for me, so. Josh?
Alright, thank you.
Social services.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, today we have the, on the agenda, the 2022 Children's Mental Health Screening Grant. It's a pass-through grant that we have. I know that Commissioner Van Kippen, we had some questions about this document sign, and so I'm still trying to work out with the state because I get at the same time you guys, you guys do the, the notification that it's coming, so I'm trying to work to get maybe a little bit more, better communication with the state, but we're not the only ones that are having issues with that as well, so. Yeah, I would just move to, or ask for an approval of the, of the contract. It's in the amount of, it's like 1,800 and some dollars or 1,900, I believe. 1,129. There we go. It was, I was gone last week for guard, so I still try to get back into it.
Any questions? And I read through it all a month ago. It's a, it's a good deal. Like you say, it's a pass-through. It's
Right.
Pretty simple thing. I'll, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Dan.
As you wanted to, Sheriff.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried?
Um, the next item up is the review and approve the ergonomic assessment recommendations. We, so now that we've started getting these ergonomic assessments via MCIT, one of the major ones was our front desk area, and how it was set up, how it's currently set up is the desks are really high, and the tabletops, and then the chairs are high, and it's just not ergonomically okay, and so we were looking at some different options. Brought in Innovative Office Solutions as they, they're, they're on the state contract and to look at some different options, and the best option and actually would be to do the remodel as it sits because of, well, everybody's moving to the sit-stand to, to accommodate everybody, and it is MCIT's recommendation to follow through on the ergonomic assessments, so we had Innovative Office Solutions provided a, a plan and a, and a quote, and they will move forward with this once we get approval, and the funding would come from, there would probably, there's a small amount that would probably be reimbursed. I have to look at the percentages and how it's broken up, but the remaining would just be used from our fund balance.
This is something, Tom, to be discussed in our meeting.
Would there be a need to change that front?
The glass part?
The glass wall?
Yeah, that's my question too.
Nope, so the glass wall, everything will stay the same, and we're able to utilize that still. It's just the desks and how they sit and where they'll be able to have it set to the correct height for themselves, and then this way it will allow us to, when, if, when, once, if we have turnover, then that would just be able to accommodate the next person as well.
I, I will move to approve.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carried?
Mr. Chair, I have one comment to make to Brian. I was in a meeting last week and I met Abby from...
Oh.
And I was quite impressed with her passion and her, what's the word? She's very in tune in, in trying to bring about good solutions, so.
Right.
I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing if she can bring some changes.
Yeah, you know, and with that, with the, again, you know, with the new executive director, Vicki, and being there and some things changing over, kind of a changing of the guard as per se, I think that there'll be some, it'd be much better, and they're really good to work with, so.
Good. And they're looking for a new location, so
Yes.
That would fit better, so.
Yep. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
So I can sign the electronic document now?
Yes.
Yep, just sign away and then it'll go through its whole order of operations, so.
Thanks for serving last week. You weren't at a nursing home, were you?
No, I was not. I was doing a certification class. I was doing a certification class, um, for my guard job, so.
I didn't know if you were sent somewhere, okay, thank you.
Thank goodness I was not.
Did you talk to Jeff Ted about electronically signing documents?
No, I haven't.
It's a reminder.
Thank you.
Yes.
On to the administrator.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, as we, as we mentioned, we pulled item nine A, and, uh, we'll be having, doing some more research relative to the data we collected, uh, on vaccinate, vaccination status prior to that, and have, hopefully have a resolution for you at our next meeting. Relative to an administrator update, I don't really have anything, other than we did not get everything together for the, um, the committee list to bring it forward to this meeting, so we'll put that on the first meeting in February and have that, hopefully have that finalized. So if you still have updates, um, that you've shared, thank you. If you have updates yet to share, try to copy myself and Denise, as she's actively working on that.
Oh, I just sent the, oh, did you forward it?
I forwarded it to Denise too, so.
Thank you.
Um, then the other items, uh, would be to get the standing committees and the ARP committee scheduled sometime uh, in the next few weeks, just to get, hit the ground running and kick those off.
And then Jeff, did you, uh, have any further thoughts regarding, um, uh, multiple meetings within the day, or, remember we talked about this last week? Where, um, yeah, an alternate will be in the meeting, we talked about per diem?
Yeah, yeah, so Commissioner Stacy asked about, when in his conversation about alternates attending meetings, to be familiar, uh, our policy doesn't address, um, whether we're gonna pay per diem for alternates, or just for the assigned, just for the delegated commissioner that I can be aware of. Past practice, and what I've understood is that only the primary would submit, the alternate would submit in the absence of the primary for their per diem costs and tra- and travel costs, but it's not specified in our, uh, in our policy that I'm aware of.
So, I, I would suggest, because a lot of us have voiced this, that, I mean, we wouldn't be attending the meetings every time as an alternate. We're gonna, like, when I'm gonna go to HRDC with Ted, it would be a one-time. Just to familiarize myself with what happens, I would suggest that we would be allowed to do the one-time. And, and like Tom, I have never been to a library meeting.
Really?
Never. So, I, I think it's a good practice if an alternate attends one time throughout the year.
For sure, for sure, if you, if you're filling in for them.
Yes, right.
No, but I, I, and I understand as well, but I think it's an imperative that all of us, you know, learn as much as we can about the different entities within the government center, and, um, like, the opportunity to go to the safety meeting, uh, I learn a lot, you know, public health. I learned tons of information there that I did not realize, specific to Hubbard County and how it relates, so. I agree with you, Chair.
Uh, Dan says, does alternate to Prime West, he is paid equally, the same amount, I am invited to attend every time, does not vote unless I'm not there. MRC, we're all a part of MRC. The board chair votes, but all the rest of us, I guess we're alternates, but we're all on the committee list, being able to attend, so. I, I don't know, if you, if you guys wanna get together and-
If you want me to throw language together-
Yes.
Relative to that in the, in the committee policy-
Yeah.
Um, we can put that in there.
That'd be great.
So if somebody's named as an alternate on the list, and they s- to one extent, the, that list functions for me to review your per diem, uh, requests. So when they come in, I track them against the roster, and, um, so i- if, if it's the board's policy that if you're named as an alternate and you submit, then I, I, administratively, I wouldn't look to, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put the language in to say that they can go one time, I would just simply say that the alternate at their discretion can apply for funds for, for per diem if they're assigned. Um, and then you guys would regulate yourself relative to that, but. We can certainly put that language in, and, and, uh, consider it when you approve the committee list next week.
It makes us a better board when we're informed.
It does make us a better board, I, I agree, and we're all busy with our committees, I can't imagine any of us abusing this.
I can't imagine that the, uh, that the financial impact would be significant.
I, I would agree with that, yeah.
And that would include mileage too.
Yeah.
Good. Anything else?
That's all I had, unless you had additional questions.
So we'll go on to committee reports. Do you want to start?
Sure. Chair and I attended a public hearing at, um, City of Parker Rapids Tuesday night. It was, um, attended well. No opposition to that, it was, uh, and only in my opinion, I thought it was drafted well. I believe that Jonathan has the same ordinance six, six-ten, six-fifteen, um, downstairs, and we'll be reviewing it and conversing with, um, Jeff, and hopefully we can get it to a public hearing soon, um, with the board. Uh, let's see, what else? HIP is, uh, continuing to meet with the ACES, um, we have, um, new programming, new, um, ways to reach our three school districts, and try to collaborate with them to, uh, reduce or assist staff, uh, and any questions they would have, and, and, um, come up to PNC. And then we didn't have the meeting at Prime Health West.
Prime West was canceled due to the weather.
Yep, so hopefully we, we have that, and we encourage, just like Chair and I had mentioned before, Chair mentioned before, you know, attending, uh, it's virtual.
Yeah, you can attend via Zoom.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea to learn, uh, it's pretty complicated, and, uh, I think it would be a beneficial, benefit to all of, well, to all of us, to attend. Otherwise, that's all that I have, we have, um, extension meeting on Thursday at six PM.
Yep.
That'd be exciting, and-
Here in the beautiful Park Rapids?
Yep, and a, possibly a new, uh, representative for District Two. We have an alternate, just in case it doesn't work out.
Swapping around a little bit, had, swap it around a little bit, had too many in District Three.
Yep.
Just a note, if you decide to, um, attend a Prime West meeting, um, Jeff can send you a link, but please let me know ahead of time, or Jeff, or whoever, because, um, we just need to let Jim know that there'll be a guest attending. Are you done?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, I attended MRC in person, and Ted attended, uh, virtual, do you want to report on that one?
Sure.
Okay, the other one I attended was, um, HLDC, the EDA meeting, um, last Wednesday, Jeff was there with me. Uh, we had, um, someone there from SEP, from Laura was there from the DAC, someone from Mahabi, um, Crystal from the school, and then Mary Thompson led the discussion, and this is about submitting, um, a community grant, and the, um, it's on workforce, uh, there's, there's workforce training, um, how, let's see, workers served in job placements, employee partnerships, regional needs, regional investment. So, um, this was explorative to see if everybody wanted to work together to this. The grants awarded can be up to a million dollars, that would be huge. Uh, we would be, uh, applying, it's a nationwide grant. What I found most beneficial about the meeting was the discussion that took place, uh, with everyone that attended, and, um, these are the reasons that we're having, that people that are coming looking for work or not looking for work, these are the barriers. Um, I was really surprised, people are still really fearful about going back to a job, 'cause they're scared they're gonna get COVID. So that creates a whole area of mental health issues, childcare is a huge one. So we talked again about, you know, um, where was it? I don't remember, but one community, perm, somebody opened a childcare there that was open, I think, from three to eleven, and it's meeting a need, a great need, plus it's always full, so that was, um, uh, there's a lot of people applying for, um, soc- um, for disability, because of the COVID mental health stuff. Employers need to be flexible, like, um, there is, in fact, I asked Jeff about this at the meeting, and, uh, way union contracts are written, at least for the county, and then there's one other entity, um, in the area, talking about job sharing, so two people would probably share a shift because of childcare, or they, whatever. And the way contracts are currently written, that doesn't allow for that, so even though sometimes employers want to be flexible, there's changes that have to be put in place to allow flexibility. Transportation, there's a lot of people that don't have transportation, that, which got into a discussion, I was just floored. There's a lot of teenagers that don't want to get their driver's license, I'm, I, I just don't get that one, but anyway, that was there, and then, um, people that need coaching and support, and so, um, Mahabi and the DAC, and then SEP all talked about how they're actively involved in coaching people, and if you can, if you can continue just to coach them and kind of cheerlead them on, just, just things like, a lot of them can't fill out a resume, or, or if they can fill out the resume, um, they might not have the qualifications educational-wise, but Abby shared this with SEP, then she started talking to this one person about what he actually did. Well, it ended up, he might not have the training certificate for, um, heavy engine equipment, but he had been doing that for years, and so just helping them to fine-tune their resume to show that, yes, they are qualified to do the positions, even if they don't have the degrees qualified to do that. And then just little, little things about cheering them on is really essential for a person to continue to have a job, or to cheer them on when they didn't get chosen for the job. And so, it, it was really helpful for me to try to understand more of the mental barriers, and how we really need to work with people that want to work, but they just need a little bit of help moving forward. So, i- it was a really good meeting, and, um, at the end of the meeting, um, the organizations thought that they would have enough, um, working with Mary to fill out an application that would be, um, worth considering at the national level, so. Oh, and one more thing, Crystal said, um, with the school, she talked about the burnout with the kids between meeting, you know, their virtual, and then they meet in person, and then, um, trying to catch up, and she said, kids are just overwhelmed with what has happened, and, and all the mental health issues that have come with the COVID lockdowns, and, and so, they're trying to work with kids just to get them to focus on making up what they missed, and then they're revamping their career tracks, if I understand that correctly, to try, um, encourage kids more to be successful after they graduate, so.
Good.
Was, excuse me, was, um, HRA, what's that, who's the director for HRA, was he involved in it?
Mary's the director for HRA.
Um, let's see, who's Scott Wilson, Scott, um, what is he doing?
He's at HUD, and he's at CAS, CASCO, I think it's CASCO, he was not there.
Would be, would he be a good asset to have on there?
I don't know, Mary sent, Mary sent out an email, and she invited all kinds of people, and this is, there was like, what, Jeff, maybe eight of us had showed up, six of us. Angel was there from the city.
Okay.
Thank you. Tom?
Oh, my computer just went out on me here, let me log back in. I got things written down. There we go. Okay, um, yeah, I'm starting to hear, uh, you know, a bit of interest on the Deep Lake Park, and supervisors at TSWCD also expressed interest in it. Um, in fact, they would like to be able to assist in wherever possible. I mean, it's, it's a ways off yet, but, um, some of the areas they, they brought up was, you know, like there's that lodge and amphitheater will have to be demolished. They can't, they won't be able to get grants for that, that'd be something we'll have to do, but they can get grants for the shoreline restoration for those areas. And both of them are really close to the lake, so, you know, it'll be help coming for that. Um, and also, they would, uh, be willing to assist in public education on conservation signage, uh, you know, planting animal information points of interest along the trails, and also help establish native, uh, plant gardens. So, yeah, they're, they're already sound like they're eager to go with it, but I told you to hold your horses a little bit, it's, there's a lot more to do yet. Um, another thing was, uh, Leech River One Water said, one plan met on Friday, and I think, uh, you gotta get a progress report on that by email, okay?
Forwarded that, that was, good to see that there's, uh, dollars being spent here in Hubbard County.
Yep, that was one of the primary reasons for the meeting, was, uh, go over things that were accomplished, and also, your original grant for implementation grant was five ninety, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we spent fifty percent of it, just recently Bowser transferred the remainder of that for twenty-twenty-two planning. I can give one example of, uh, I don't know if it was on that sheet, of, um, a feedlot on Cabocona River, where there's a lot of e. coli, um, showing up, and, uh, they worked with them to, um, you know, get the cattle away from, they put up fences to keep the cattle away from the, uh, the river, and one of the reasons that the cattle went to the river was because they needed water, and, and they got shade down there, so they also erected a, uh, shade, a shed for shade, and also put in a well.
Oh, for water?
Yeah, for water, so, yeah, you know, there's, there's benefits coming out of it.
Good.
So hopefully that'll take care of that e. coli problem that they've had there. Um, that's about it.
Thank you. Let's see, uh, I'll start off with the, uh, MRC, uh, Chair attended in person, I was there remotely. Um, they discussed about, uh, doing more lobbying, but not increasing our dues in the process. Um, I think that was encouraging. Uh, they have here, uh, the MRC priority list issues for twenty-twenty-two. Uh, this will be stuff that they'll try to talk to the legislature about. Uh, transportation funding, local government road wetland replacement program funding, rural ban funding, um, emergency readiness grant funding, maintaining regulatory certainty of water designated under the public waters inventory, county-based purchasing, and county program aid. And they talked about preserving tax base, and they said that they were gonna put that under county program aid, if I remembered it correctly. And then MRC also has what they call their watch list issues, uh, for twenty-twenty-two. These are things, of course, that they're keeping an eye on. Uh, adequate health and human services, computer replacement funding, energy for greater Minnesota manufacturing and residential needs, county mental health workers retirement, or, excuse me, retention funding, support supervisory efforts on Remonumentation Act, uh, for the surveying, uh, payment allure of tax funding increase, support higher bar on executive powers for calling special sessions, and oppose new tooth and taxation rules. And that's what I have for MRC. Also had a Mississippi Headwaters River One Watership One Plan. Um, we're moving from the planning stage to the implementation stage. Next month, we'll be looking at, the board here will be asked to approve the memorandum of agreement, and the work budget plan, or work plan budget, excuse me. We're looking at asking for eight hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-one dollars for, uh, grant funding to start the, uh, implement, to start to implement the work plan. And that went, has gone pretty smoothly, actually, Bowser told us the money's there. We just have to get all the-
Yeah, you gotta come up with a work plan and release it, a little at a time.
Yeah, get everything in place, and then, so it sounded like it was pretty much a dumb deal, we just have to go through the proper steps. Had a healthy Hubbard County twenty-thirty meeting, uh, Dan attended that, uh, but that was a remote one. Marley, uh, runs the meeting, and I was gonna bring up the minutes here, if it was work, uh- Of course, COVID nineteen response is, is part of it. County numbers and variants, there's a couple of different variants. The numbers were reviewed, case losses are, cases are increasing in Hubbard County, similar to the whole state. The positivity rate remains high. Vaccinations, the community health continues to offer walk-in vaccinations every week, Tuesday from nine A M. to eleven A M. And then the hospital update, COVID, the census is lower, COVID census is lower at this time. The emergency room is still busy with testing. There's of course staffing, a concern with recent increases in, in cases and illnesses. The community health update, family home visiting, of course, because of COVID and that, they aren't doing that much in person. Case loads are down through twenty twenty-one due to the pandemic restrictions. They're hoping to increase case loads and referrals in the coming year if the pandemic would allow. Let's see, WIC, physical presence, presence waiver continues through April twenty twenty-two. Case loads remain steady. Let's see, community health survey is currently available on their website. They haven't received over five hundred responses so far and the survey will be, remain open until the thirty-first of this month.
It's a fifty dollar gift card, possibly.
Oh, I didn't know.
There's an incentive, yeah.
Oh, okay.
What's the survey on?
Health needs, I haven't taken it myself, I actually just got that the other day. I was gonna try to do that last night so I could answer a question like that. They, I know if it was similar to last year, they're gonna be asking, what do you think the community needs? What are our greatest needs and, and stuff like that.
What's the website?
Let me see if I can find it for you, Char. I took it, I believe.
I have an update, if you remember when Marley was here last week, I asked her about the, they were rationing the COVID
Okay.
Treatments and, and the higher, if you were Latino or a black, you received a higher number. And I personally know of a white person that was, actually last Wednesday was denied treatment for the monoclonal because, and the doctor said, if your skin had been a color other than white, we could have given it to you.
You know.
But, but, oh, wait, I, I, there's an update. So Minnesota was one of three states doing that. Somebody filed a loss, an organization filed a lawsuit against Minnesota this last week. And Minnesota dropped
Good.
The, the racial tie into receiving COVID treatment. So now it's not based on skin color.
I was gonna insert, and some of the statistics that we got from Marley, one of them was, you know, whites make up eighty percent of the population in Minnesota, but they make up eighty-four percent of the COVID cases.
Oh, okay.
How can you say there's discrimination over race?
Yeah, one, one race needs it more than the other, it appears, the numbers show.
That's what the numbers show.
Wow, curious.
Which is part of the absurdity of it all.
Yeah, really.
And then the last thing I have was I had an extension meeting Friday afternoon, we're looking at currently Tara Young is our, works for extension here in Hubbard County, she's at the point three five E F T position. We were looking at maybe hiring somebody else, but Tara is interested still in participating in the program, she's the intern. So we decided to remove the intern label. Eva and Ivy had talked with, along with Lisa, with Beltrami County, and their interests in having some extension services starting next year. After their original meeting here earlier this year, they, or excuse me, late last year, they were really excited in Beltrami County because they had envisioned the old county agent just working with farmers. And when they realized we're looking at beekeeping and also pastures, master gardeners, there's all these things that are involved with extension, they were rather excited now, but they aren't budgeted for this year, so they're looking at partnering possibly with Hubbard County for twenty twenty-three. And then we would be looking at, and that's kind of my thought was why do we want to change anything right now or we may be doing this again in twelve months or less. And I guess that's all I've got.
Can I ask you a question on one of your committees?
Sure.
You mentioned something about opposing truth in taxation changes, what changes are coming?
I guess there's some rules or whatever that they're looking at changing, I don't have the particulars here, that was with our, our MRC.
I'll get this from her every, every week.
So rural counties? I'm sure on their website, if I can find it, I can forward it to you, but. And maybe Kay would know more on what the proposed changes are.
There are several proposed changes, I think they actually passed to be implemented for this year. There was conversation about publication require, increasing publication requirements, there was conversation about the need to create a public budget committee. I think that's the one that most people are primarily opposed to. So that, we'll be getting some information as we go along.
Okay.
But yeah, it, it doesn't make any sense, we're providing more than that information already. And unless, there are several counties that have public budget committees. But it takes a long time to educate people to the point where they can participate actively in a budget conversation and have the background material to be able to do so constructively. And that's primarily the, the objection.
I have, I have one thing related to committees. So Dan and I are in Prime Health and when I was at MRC last Monday, then I went over and I talked to Matt because, you know, the way the bylaws are written, we had to give notice that we're leaving Prime Health even though we might not be. So we had a discussion about that and Matt shared that Jeff had called him the week before, Thursday or Friday. And Matt believes that it would be really beneficial for Jeff to attend our Prime Health meetings and they're virtual, so Jeff wouldn't have to spend time driving down. But, you know, Jeff is new and Matt, Matt really appreciated Jeff's input. However, if Jeff had been attending some of the meetings, he would have had a better understanding prior to when all this happened also. So it was, if Jeff is open to it, it was Matt's recommendation that the board would encourage Jeff to attend the Prime Health meetings. There are a lot of other administrators that just joined via Zoom.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, Char.
It was my understanding, he was gonna send me an invitation, so as soon as I get it, I'll respond.
Sometimes we get it like.
Oh, well, you don't have one now until February.
Yeah.
So our next Prime Health meeting is on February twenty-fourth.
February twenty-fourth?
Yeah.
What's not the beginning of the month?
You're, you're mixing up Prime West with Prime Health. And they are working on the bylaws, the wording, because there were other counties that had the same problem.
Okay.
So would that, that be the consensus of the board?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Dan.
I'm done.
So when I came in for the public health meeting last week, I think it was Wednesday, had a little bit of time prior to walked into Jeff's meeting with the department heads and I just want to let you know that Jeff handled himself very well, I've seen a lot of good things come out of that. Management style, leadership, and I definitely think he did a fine job at that meeting last week, so just want to point that out. The minister is doing a good job.
Is there a department head meeting at the end of the month?
I was just gonna say that.
So it'd be the last Tuesday of the month?
The last Tuesday of the month.
And then, of course, the chair will be there and vice chair traditionally been the first one?
It's been a while since I've gone to one, so probably, even if it was rotation, it's probably mine.
You're turning.
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. And that'll be nine o'clock right here. Cause, let's see, I see Jeff has in here meeting notes. Hubbard County Township Association will meet Monday twenty-fourth at seven o'clock and that's a Zoom meeting. And then the AMC Legislative Conference, March second and third, St. Paul.
Is anybody going to that?
I don't plan on it.
I don't either, we, the MRC meeting is that night, the night before, and so I'm assuming we can just join Zoom.
I don't think the registration materials have come out for that yet.
Are you going?
Depending on the, on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, I guess that's true, depending on the agenda.
See that first.
Yeah.
There's nothing else, I guess I'll look for an adjourn, adjourn.
Also move.
Thank you, Sarah.
You second or is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm a second, thank you, Tom. We are adjourned.
Thank you.